Alright. T uh Twitch is online. User is online, alright. Yeah let's do it so So we need to clone the repository first. And this will lead us to the the dependencies discovery phase. So that now that we have the source code oh I need to install Visual Studio Code. Let's see if this goes as expected or not. Meanwhile I'll check the audio yeah that's working. Let's see if everything's going well here here right that's good. I need to check Hmm This other platform exquisite. Alright let's see if my string is going there. Is it? Yeah it's working great. Hmm alright. So let's install Visual Studio Code as uh which we'll use as the primary source code editor. And now we can open the the folder in which we have cloned the repository. That way we can navigate the source code easily and uh find the dependencies. So the first thing we need to do is we need to um determine which build flags we want to use for our tests and in this case we are going to produce a development test um development uh build. So we'll start oh we need to install CMake 'cause this requires CMake um anywhere version then three twelve so yeah sure. So we can use the regular CMake from A P T that's good enough. Then then we can use CMake with the flags for the development build which is F L B underscore D E V. And we need to modify these this build script to disable some stuff that's uh not necessary. Well uh we we will leave this because this won't cause a problem here but when building for uh in Windows this this too will cause a um cause Fluent Bit not to build 'cause the the source code was not properly tested there and uh there are some p the dependencies or some includes that are borked. So in order to use uh to build Fluent Bit we have to run CMake with the path to the source code and this will fail and we expect it to fail that's because we don't have Flex in Bison which is required by the uh record accessor f uh functionality. So we are going to install the regular versions of Flex in Bison. Next we're we're gonna retry and it will fail once again because we are still missing dependencies but this is just to um show how the the process would go if we didn't know which dependencies we are missing from the get-go. Uh it w it should probably fail first with either Open S S L or libyamo but we'll see which one is it. This is a fresh install so the only things we have are the compiler CMake, Visual Studio Code and not much not much else nothing in terms of uh dependencies which there are not a lot but we have nothing so we'll find out. So the first error is related to Open S S L and for that we need to run A P T to find the the appropriate package we need to install this is much easier if we just follow the instructions for the for the C I target uh the C I action but you know we're doing it this way to simulate the discovery process. And this one this one will do this will install Open S S L three point O which is fine because uh Fluent Bit will build with either three point O or one point one well others two but those are the main ones. And now we have to do it again. And it will fail when it fail um it will fail when it doesn't find yamo libyamo so we have to do the same thing. And there it goes. Now we can try again and oh it didn't like it.
Hmm.
It's interesting. Oh it's not libyamo in this case it's that what needs libyamo al also needs a P K G configur and for that I think it's auto tools. Um let's see what is it uh it's not let's see I think it's auto tools. No that doesn't seem to be the case. That that this should be yeah. P P K G conf alright. Yeah here. Right. So the configurations um phase of the of the process went well. And we were able to generate the make files for for the project. There we have it. So we have this make file which is gonna allow us to to build Flint Bit. Now if we do make J eight we're gonna run eight processes at the same time which should make these um the build process much faster or at least faster than it could be I guess. Let's see why. Did I miss something here? Hmm. Not entirely sure I don't think so though. Last thing you um this dependency should be bundled so so that shouldn't be a problem. And even though there are a bunch of warnings there are no errors so we're good so far. And once this step finishes we'll be able to take look at the code and uh make some make some tests or perform some tests. I guess. I think uh we need to install some of these extensions in Visual Studio Code to be able to or to get proper mm syntax highlighting and uh uh code navigation in C. Think once we open a file it's gonna detect it and it did. So we can do this in order to save some time while the compilation process is still going. I prefer to to build um to build and edit in different uh environments uh rather than building using uh Visual Studio Code but that's just a matter of um what I'm used to it's not about um about it not working but rather just being more comfortable for me. Oh let's see alright now we're now we're gay getting proper uh syntax highlighting and uh and source code um discovery I guess that's uh the most important part of it it's is the actual analysis of the source code rather than the highlighting uh part 'cause in order to to navigate the dependency graph of these uh functions it's it's quite useful um to have it. Alright so we have our first build. And we can run yeah it works. So oh there's an error here it seems that the minor version was bumped but the the banner was was not updated. So that's something we should be able to to modify we're not gonna do it because it's not exactly code. But uh if I recall correctly that should be in the main um in the main source file for the mm standalone version of of Fluent Bit not the 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 library code that pr that provides the actual functionality but the entry point. So let's see if we can find that. Maybe it's not here. We'll see so the first thing is uh we have our entry point here. And pressing F twelve we can follow a function. Now let's see no this is not what we want. Let's see this is the function we want. It seems to me that let's see so this is the configuration context uh creation and uh is gonna do a whole lot of uh parsing the options. But that's not what we care about in this case. Yeah here. Yeah here we have the banner and uh let's see do we have anything? Mm yeah that's this part and then we should have the rest. Should be these. M O T D where is it defined? Yeah it's here. So it's not something we care a lot about right now. We're gonna just let it go. Now um this particular case I'm more interested in the some issues that I'm that I've been reviewing. And uh the one that I care about is this one. This one's uh pull request. That's that's meant to address issue number um eleven thousand one hundred and thirteen which apparently is a memory corruption when uh one particular input plugin is suspended due to um because it exceeds um its its memory quota and according to the according to the pull request this is uh or this was interpreted as a race condition. However in this in this case I'm not I'm not convinced by this because there should be no threading um or threadplay at all. This um this input plugin as well as the output plugin um the the main components of the pipeline and uh in the in the very limited use case or test case uh should be all running in the same thread. So so it doesn't make a lot of uh sense to me but we are going to we're going to start by just um generating a test uh test configuration or actually using the one that was provided by the by the user. And uh I think it's oops. And this one this one's gonna require a little bit um a little bit of um help from a from an ext uh an external um an external script because it's meant to to receive uh data from a Fluent D instance or another Fluent Bit instance that that should be okay. And uh in this particular case it's it's trying to uh to dump the contents to the to the file system but we're not going to do that because we're running on our own uh hard drive and that doesn't make a lot of sense in this case 'cause it would just cause it to write a bunch of data to the hard drive and thus um cause uh sector um load or use cycles write cycles which which is not ideal so we're going to start with the standard output uh output plugin which will just dump what it gets uh what it receives to the console to the shell. And as and we are going to use the forward input plugin to listen on these um on this Unix Unix socket. Maybe the we're gonna have to to we're gonna have to change these parameters a little bit to ensure that that chunks are not flushed uh immediately because we need these uh we need the the chunks to be um to take more than four megabytes of memory. And if we ha if we have the flush timer set to one second and the output plugin set to standard output that's gonna uh in practical terms that's gonna mean that we we won't have any latency from uh input to output and our pipeline is gonna be empty most of the time so we're gonna uh first we're gonna try it uh and then we're gonna tweak it. So the f the next step is to generate a use um another configuration for the for the producer oh oops which is gonna be al also a just another Flint Bit instance except it's gonna use whoops forward as an output and it's gonna use dummy as an input and just for our test case we're gonna generate one sample. Now then what we're gonna do is uh oops um let's see does this have any mm no it doesn't it doesn't support um splitting the terminal. So we're gonna run Flint Bit with the with the listener uh configuration file. And that's that's not happy that's probably because we don't have the the right permissions to to do that. So we're just gonna change the path to some path that we have proper control of that's gonna make it easier. Alright so now that we have these going we can just uh let's see if we can do this we no we can't. Oh there's no such thing oh yeah there it is. So now we can have two terminals. That's weird. But okay. For some reason it doesn't want to maximize and snap to the right side of the of the screen. Which is a little bit weird. Ugh this is less than ideal but it's gonna have to do. Right. So now we can run Flin uh Fluent Bit with the configuration file we generated for the producer and it should whoops. Oh yeah it needs more um more I guess at this point we can also edit these files from the from Visual Studio Code as well. So see we have this one and this one. Now of course um of course output plugins don't have a buffer limits and uh we can check the other parameters on the official documentation. Now we're using the Unix path so we don't need to set up the host and port that's good and workers workers we're gonna set that to zero to one that should be good and now let's see what else do we need do we need anything I don't think so I think it was just the wrong option yeah so let's see yeah so we got this it's working fine that's good now we need to do something to um generate more traffic and for that we're gonna use the dummy input plugin and we we're gonna set um these um these parameters the rate which is how many messages per second we are gonna generate and we're gonna use copies which is gonna basically act as a multiplier inter uh to determine how many uh copies of the of the message we generate we're gonna we're gonna remove the samples limit because we don't care how many samples we we generate and we're gonna add these numbers which are not meant to be ideal but they they are meant to just get us close to the the idea of how many um packages we need to send now or packets I would I would say rather say so now we can use uh another instance of the forward output plugin to send more copies of these uh generated data or packets and that yeah that's enough to you know cause more and more and more uh data to be sent now if we add a if we change the flash settings from one second to ten seconds we're not going to see as much traffic in our shell or noise have maybe in our shell as we were seeing but we're gonna see it all in a in a in a long um in long stream now these are rather s uh small packets uh of data and the amount of the 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 packet count or the message count is rather low which is uh twenty thou thousand which is obviously not gonna be enough to uh exceed the four megabyte memory limit that we have established for this input plugin but that's something we can um verify by running the um by sending a a user signal to to fluent B I T or a continuation signal to fluent B I T which will cause it to print the internal um metrics so see in this case we have just just the one chunk um here for some reason we're not seeing that um we're not seeing the the number the the size but that's okay it doesn't really matter uh what matters is that we need to we need to send more data and we need to hold that data for a longer period of time in order to um overwhelm the system so let's change this slightly so instead of sending the data to the standard output we're gonna send the data to the new output plugin which is just gonna discard the the information rather than printing it when when time comes now we can do the same and oops and we can use mm no we can't use this this is backwards oh float bit crashed great that's fantastic that's exactly what we were looking for so what can we do uh to to diagnose this first of all let's see what the original um report said what are they using here are they using um yeah they are using Valgrind so we can use Valgrind for this because uh they in they could they could have been using Valgrind or um address sanitiser so let's install what we need in order to to use Valgrind and it is we need to install Valgrind and I don't know I guess through this we probably don't need to install the um development headers and uh separately that's uh but we'll find out yeah that's good so now we need to uh change our configuration our build configuration um we need to tweak it slightly to to use Valgrind and for that we need to pass the F L B Valgrind uh flag which will um build fluent B I T with Valgrind support which means it's gonna add the um required context to trace um to t to to trace what's happening with the allocator and uh trace the coroutines correctly so we can do we can do this and if we add the fresh flag it's gonna regenerate everything alright let's go well at least that's how it looks hmm seems that I'm I'm gonna have to to check the the streams once I'm done because it seems like um I'm streaming at a lower uh rate I guess uh bit rate and I don't know if uh if it's gonna look good or not hmm there's someone here who's here mm bots let's see so now now that we have uh regenerated the 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 configuration files we can rebuild the the project and of course because ha we have uh changed just uh some uh crucial parts of the configuration uh specifically the uh the addition of the Valgrind flag and uh and the the changes that that induces in the in the uh the header files uh causes the whole thing to to need to be rebuilt um because it's uh basically a sweeping change in in all of the all of the th the the object files so mm yeah yeah it seems like it's sort of like a bot situation that's interesting yeah so once these um this build is complete we're gonna be able to run this using um ball grind and that's gonna allow us to um to detect where the crash is happening which hopefully is gonna look something like what was reported by this by this person in the original issue which is this one and I expect these to be mm a little bit confusing but but I'm quite sure that that it shouldn't be the case like uh it shouldn't be a threading problem mm alright let's see we ha let let's try to mimic how this person run for a bit okay so we're running for a bit and we can start the flood the flood oh yeah I guess it doesn't like it because uh I run my date with sudo and uh the client was not running with sudo hmm interestingly and half yeah seems like we need more um I think we're gonna need a little bit more traffic to to bring it down because um ball grind is making the um ball grind is causing the memory operations to be slower and the 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 whole thing or this thing as a whole to be slower and that um modifies the flush rate and the the fill rate and that's what what's causing it to not uh hit the the quota I think now let's make a slight change here um and add grace set to zero and that that means that when we press control Z uh the system is gonna exit immediately rather than trying to flush all of the remaining chunks which is what we want in this particular case because we don't care about losing information of course in production you would try not to do that and you would probably use a file system based uh backing for these plugins but in this case we really don't care now let's see how this goes three two three that's not going so well oh it's it's growing yeah it's growing yeah okay we got it now let's see if this looks anything like what what was reported by this user at first glance it does look somewhat similar but but why did this happen I think I messed up something here let's let's add some scroll back because it looks like the 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 memory report the ball grind report uh that prints when the process is terminated um removed the the corruption detection information that that I had and uh that's no bueno so let's see now because we know that that it's eventually gonna hit the limit we won't send any signals um to try not to affect the way in which mm fluent B I T is running we're gonna try to leave it as is and uh in order to get a crash or a corruption that looks uh as similar as possible to what the user reported which let's see is uh on the receiver function now let's see yep it crashed great that's much better now let's see mm that's interesting because it doesn't really look like um what was reported mm it does in a way but not not really and I wonder I wonder if it's related or not I think I wonder if it's related or not. I think it it should. I think it should but but let's see. So what do we have here? Okay. So we have these this call chain here. And this one looks pretty similar to this one so let's let's follow it a little bit. So we have the connection delete on to fifty one. Yeah, that makes sense. Input pause. Yes, alright so so what this is telling me is that these um this event processing um was triggered after these um uh cleanup or disposal routine executed and because of that it's detecting the corruption. Now if we look at the code here that's precisely what we see although the the stack trace uh is slightly different. Because in this case it's uh crashing in these it's it's only getting up to these um to this line and I think yeah, yeah, I think that's it makes sense so but it does look like it's the same thing. But still we're gonna take a look at this and see if we can uh pinpoint the line and and see what's going on there. Now let's so the first thing we have to do is uh we need to navigate to the to the correct point in the in the in the input plugins source code. And we know that the plugin that we care about is the forward input plugin. And uh one thing that's that's very important to to keep in mind here that I forgot to point out before is that the way this is running as per the configuration and uh I wanted to um to confirm this is uh it's running in two threads. We have the main thread eh which is basically a control thread for the daemon. And then we have the sec the second thread which is the amalgamation of the input plugins, the the main pipeline um management thread and the output plugins. And that's because we didn't specify uh threaded mode in this in this plugin or workers in this plugin and that means that um the the routines for both of both of these are going to run in the same thread as the what what we would call the main thread um in the pipeline. So that's interesting. That that's actually very that's very useful because what that makes me think is that even though the symptoms are similar this is not a threading problem and the the changes proposed by these uh pull requests might work for some reason. I haven't uh exactly or actually um reviewed the code of this PR because I knew uh because I suspected that this wasn't the co the the case so I wanted to save some time and and just confirm uh my suspicion before spending any time trying to diagnose or confirm uh his hypothesis. And I've got it because I'm quite sure that that's not the case. So let's let's go to let's go to the code in the in the forward plugin, the forward input plugin. We're gonna locate uh all three points of interest here. One of those points is or two of them rather are are these ones. Because these are uh the points where it's crashing in in my system. This is the point where it crashes but this is the point that uh most closely relates to the point where it cr uh crashes for the user. And that's that would be in the same function but at a different place. So that's this is a point of interest and then we're gonna have to look at these to to see how it affects or rather why um it would do what it's doing. So let's see what the function tells us. So we uh prod process okay. Let's see. Now in the case of the user, this function was crashing online uh one three oh one. And that would be this. Which makes perfect sense because it's trying to manipulate a member of a structure that that was already uh released. Right? Now in our case for some reason um it's it's crashing much later on but that's normal. That's that's not something that we need to worry about. Um that that that's quite normal for memory corruptions. We get to one four forty three. That's around here, yeah. And that's when we are when we get to the point where we are actually processing the the data. Now this is gonna take us to line nine ninety four. Nine ninety four is the encoder reset. Now this is um what this means is that the corruption was um not detected at the right time and because of that it um it just got to 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 a later point but the the thing is that it's the same because this is using the the encoder reset function which resets the the context for a log encoder which is the the function that the or the component that produces logs in a format that can be ingested by fluidbit. And the log encoder is part of the connection context and because the connection is uh disposed of in in this part of the code in the forward connection uh delete which is called when when the pause method is is invoked then uh this ends up accessing invalid memory. Now now let's see how this works. So we have in fluidbit in input plugins we have a bunch of callback functions. Those are the functions that are used by the by the the system to to notify or to cause plugins to 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 perform certain actions. In in the case of uh input plugins we have the initialization callback, a pre-run callback which is call um used to set up um to perform setup that that's required um before the collection starts but that's um it's seldomly used by input plugins uh to be honest. I don't think uh I've seen many that use it. Then we have the collection callback. And these uh is the function that's gonna be invoked whenever there's a specific event that requires collection and that uh there there are different types of events that trigger collection. It can be timer based, it can be um activity based on a file descriptor. Hmm I think there could be others but I should check. But in this case we care about the activity based uh in a file descriptor because this is a listener. This uh network listener or in this case a Unix socket listener but that's basically the same in 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 this context. And that means that whenever there's a connection uh that whenever a client establishes or tries to establish a connection uh this function is gonna be invoked. And that's gonna cause the the plugin to accept the connection and create the required context for that connection which in in turn includes the initialization of the context of the log encoder context. Then we have this function which seems to be new so I don't know anything about it and then we have the the pause, resume and exit callbacks. Pause is meant to be used when uh there's an event such as um resource uh limit uh exhaustion that requires the plugin to to pause its operation but not uh not stop operating at all or like completely, right? It's just meant to 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 let the plugin know that it that it's it's not meant to to take any any more um data uh. And then there's the resume function which um reverts the the changes made by the pause function and then there's the exit function which is meant to uh clean everything up. So in our particular case we care about the pause function. And what this is doing is it's it's pausing the collector and the collector in this case is the what monitors the um the socket, the listener. And that's fine. That's that's not causing any problems. Then uh it takes uh it it uses these uh mutual exi um mutual locking uh well lock this exclusive lock to work on the on the connections on the connection list. Now these I would like to check because um I think this is this is something this is something that shouldn't ha that like shouldn't happen. Um why? Why is it something that shouldn't happen? If I'm correct um this function or this callback should be called by by the managing thread. The which means the thread that's uh in charge of managing this input plugin. If this input plugin is running in uh in threaded mode, that means it's gonna have its own uh manager thread. And if it's running in in non-threaded mode, it means the main thread is gonna be the one managing uh these um this input plugin instance. So let's see. Okay, let let's go through the the simpler path I would say. Now in our um in our crash we have the I would say the offending uh stack trace because realistically speaking this is the one that's causing the problem or the the root of the problem. And what we can see is that we are uh running the we're we're getting called from the the processing function the in the in the input plugin which is the one that we saw before. Um let's see here. This one, right? In this line, nine eighty nine hmm it's it's here. We are appending the data from this um from this record that we received through the Unix socket. We are appending that to the dataset that's um being actively held in the pipeline. And uh this is a specialized function for log um for log signals, right? There's not it it's not really important uh what this does in in this particular case. But it does some minimal processing. It runs the processor stack and all of that but that's not important. What's important is that when it um when it finishes uh processing all of that data and transforming it and so on and so forth it calls the function uh provided by the system that's meant to um ingest the data in the pipeline which is F L B input chunk append raw with which appends raw data. And because the plugin is not running in threaded mode in this case the day the the action is um performed immediately rather than being deferred into the into the ring buffer. So when this um function is called excuse me. When this function is called it tries to uh obtain the the chunk which is basically the data file except it can be well a file or a memory location but in terms of uh from an ab abstract point of view it's it's the actual storage for the for the data. So it finds a it finds a suitable place where to store these. And once it does everything else it um it check well it checks the this is not this is not the right place. No, this is not the right place because this um what this does is it releases uh it releases some data that's uh currently um uh cold hmm as in it's not being used. Uh it releases that uh in order to fit the new data if the the input plugin is about to go over its limits. And then then this this one reacts to the input plugin being paused. But it's not the important one in this case because the input plugin is not yet paused because uh as unless this changed uh last thing I knew, fluidbit uh reacted to limit uh um to to limit uh to getting over the memory limit or the storage limit uh post fact uh I mean after the data is is written. So what this means is that uh this is gonna be this is gonna go just as normal. It's gonna get the the chunk and it's gonna uh append the the data to the to the chunk and that's that's okay, that's just fine. It's gonna uh perform the filtering if necessary. It's gonna write the the It's gonna uh perform the filtering if necessary, it's gonna write the 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 data to the chunk after it's uh transformed by the filter stack. And then um once we get to the to the end of the function, once uh everything is done, um it's gonna check to see if the if the limits have been exceeded and that's performed by F L B input check protect. That means that when storage uh limits or memory limits have been uh exceeded, Flint Bit is gonna try to uh pass the plugin, the the input plugin which is what we are seeing here. So we get to the to the function that's processing the data that's sent by the user. We append that information, that data to the to the to the pipeline, we ingest that data into the pipeline through these uh three functions or four functions that we have um described earlier. And then we get to the chunk protect call here which was uh see which was right at the end of uh input chunk ch- input chunk append raw. And when we get here and we check the the memory limits for the input plugin, we detect that the input plugin has exceeded its limits and we try to pause the plugin, right? That's here. And when we when we execute F L B input pass and remember that we are running in non-threaded mode, what this means is that uh we are calling the pause callback from the same thread immediately. So so far there's absolutely no thread delay. And that means we get to to this callback straight straight from this one. So we are processing the the data we received. We uh detect the memory uh limit being exceeded and we call the the function required to to pause these these um input plugin. And what this does is it uh acquires this lock which we'll review later, but I'm fairly sure that is um moot to to put it in a way. And then we proceed to destroy all of the uh connections which is nothing but a loop through the uh active connection list that uh invokes the disposal or the destroyer, the the release function uh for the connections. What this does is it closes the connection, this is the the actual connection close um closure, I guess. Uh and then um releases the the compression context um which is used to, I guess, to do to decompress packets uh I don't know because I it seems that this was added after I stopped actively working on this. And then we release some other uh information or context from this um uh connection. Now there's something there's something interesting here that uh I'm not seeing I'm not seeing the rest of the connection context being destroyed. So let's let's just be sure of that. Function Delta two, it's two fifty-one, yeah. So it's this but the problem is here. Now this context oh, I know, I know. So this context um this context is not um exclusive to the connection. This context is probably a um pointer to the actual plugin's context, but let's let's verify this. So the um the function that we are working on is F W con though. That's a weird name. And the data structure that we are releasing is this uh F W con. Now this F W con has this member that's called C D X. And C D X context is just a pointer to the uh plugin's context. That's because the uh the actual uh log encoder is shared uh through bu- by all of the connections because there's no need to there's no need to to have a log encoder per uh connection. Plus it's a mm the the usage of the log encoder is in a way um atomic. So there's no point for that, there's no point to uh odd in uh duplicating all of that memory and all that stuff. So what we are seeing is that because this memory is getting released in this function. Let's go back to the function here. So the memory is getting released in this function. And then um this function is trying to use this pointer which is now uh invalid memory. So we have two problems here. The first one being that um we are releasing this uh structure before we are done um using it. Cause uh in fact now that I now that I think about it, uh I'm starting to doubt because at first I thought that that it was my uh instance that was not detecting the the memory failure or the memory, the access violation um at the right point. Mm-hmm, like it was delaying it. But when when we think a little bit more about it and we see that the error is in line nine ninety-four which is immediate after the log input uh the input log append call, that makes me think that uh instead of that it's actually uh detecting the the corruption immediately after it happens rather than uh in a delayed manner. So that's uh that's actually important. So if we go back uh if if we traverse the code uh backwards from this from this point, we can see that uh let's see how many calls are there. Okay, there's only there's only this call for this particular function, but there are other uh mechanisms um for that are used for other types of of um packets. In fact let's see one three oh one, okay, no that's that's okay. So when we get out of this function and this is another problem, uh this function is called uh in a loop because the the actual packet can have many entries. So that means that regardless of what we do, if we suspend the if we pause the input plugin and destroy the connections um immediately, then there's absolutely no way for us not to um access invalid memory if we have more than one record or let's see if this function uses the connection which it probably does afterwards. Let's see. Now actually this function, yeah, well let's see. Mm no, this function will only access the connection if it goes through this other code path for uh compressed data. Which means that if we get to these uh through this path which is basically the same thing and uh and we mm yes, we have a yeah, we have a um we have a loop here which I'm fairly sure it's gonna cause a problem because it's calling append log which apparently is a yeah, it's a wrapper function that calls that ends up calling input log event which means it can uh trigger the immediate pausing of this uh input plugin. And if that function fails for whatever reason which could be that the first time uh the first time it's called, it triggers the over limit um the over limit uh flag which in turns causes these to be paused. And then for some reason it doesn't crash because well we are not running on the bio bug, right? Then this function is gonna be called a second time and this this memory is likely to be uh still okay, uh I I mean uh not not correct mm from a technical standpoint but uh intact um because it's probably not um reassigned. So we're gonna call this function again, we're gonna end up going through these um through these function woop here. And what's gonna happen is that we are going to go through this conditional and because the input the input plugin is um paused, it's gonna return minus one which is gonna be detected here. And this function is gonna return minus one. Oops, that's not what I was looking for. It's gonna return minus one which will cause these to go through the cleanup, that compress uh the compression um uh label which is gonna try to destroy the decompression uh context which in turn obviously is gonna access the connection uh pointer which was released but also uh is gonna um go through these and try to uh destroy the decompression context again because it was not no uh set to null here which makes sense when you are not you're you're not supposed to set every single pointer to null after you re- res- um release it. But in this particular case it causes a it compounds the problem. So let's see. Uh we have a a a double free here and then double free here. Let's see if there's anything else. Yeah, maybe this could be more dangerous because we would have to, you know, uh delve into the standard to determine if that could cause an actual um if that type of bug could actually end up being explo- exploitable which would be much worse than a crash. So uh let's um make a brief uh like a recap of where we are. We started with this bug. The input plugin is getting paused because it's uh exceeding the memory allocation or its memory limits which is the same. And that means that when it's paused, it immediately disposes of all of the connections here which in turn affects the um reminder of the processing that's taking place in the F W pro- process function. Now what's what can we do about this? What we need to do is we need to delay the cleanup process. We need to delay the cleanup process. In this particular callback we need to know if we are mm executing uh a collection or um if we're in the middle of executing a collection or event uh routine. And then um we need to delay this. So let's see, what is is ingestion active? If the plugin is paused then so we are in a shutdown phase, it's gonna close the socket server collector. This socket stop is workaround since the server API will be refactored shortly. I wonder what this means. Mm. Well, let's see, who is setting this? Oh. We need to find some reference to this because this is kinda confusing. Oh, no, that's fine. This is uh controlled by the global context, I thought it it was part of the of the input promise context, not the global context. So uh we need to we need to add a new any flag uh that we will use to determine if we are processing uh an event. So plugin is paused, no. Int um int um no let's do it definitely. No. Mm-hmm um mm-hmm so we're gonna try to uh define some states uh that we're that we will use to to determine where we are we're gon we wanna know if we are just waiting for stuff to happen if we are handling an inbound connection if we are handling um an event from a connection or if we are just well mm I would say yeah that that should be all because uh adding one we could we could add the post um flag to that that should be fine. So this particular um handler for inbound connections this one will cause the connection to be accepted and added to the context. Right so let's see. If we have a a shared key this will try to start this uh process and that means we're gonna generate these packets and we're gonna write. Now this means that this um this co-routine could be um passed in this in this particular moment. Um I'm not sure if um coroutines are being used in this uh at this point at least for non-threaded input plugins but if they are and I think for at least for threaded input plugins they they are then this this is a non-blocking socket and it could uh it could cause this uh function to uh shield its uh execution to to prevent it from blocking which means we need to be able to handle this state in combination with a pause uh event and that's that's important so we need to define these states we have idle have accepting client have processing packet and we have mm passed mm yeah this looks better this way so now we can define this loosely as follows it's just a set of content uh of content constants and we will set this one in in the initialization function. Let's see. Let's let's set it here. You can yeah let's do this this way. That that's better we don't need to but that's not necessary. So we will start in a neutral point which means we will start us running then depending on what happens we could move to to passed but we need to we need to keep in mind um we need to keep in mind that yeah this is fine. Yeah we will modify this um without the other um I would say the other threads known the other yeah the other mm coroutines or the other parts of the code maybe so if um mm-hmm oops. So if this is running oops we can do this and we will have to revisit this because I'm fairly sure that um no that's no bueno that was a mistake. We can en- enclose all of these. So we'll have to revisit this because I'm fairly sure that this makes no sense. Now what this means is that we are now going to delete that connection list if we are in a running state. Now what's the the next port we need to we need to set this state we need to set this state to resume uh to running. Alright now we have the basis for this but the 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 one thing that we need to keep in mind is that we need to set this state both in the both in the collection routine which is let's see accepting clients and we need to save this so we go back to the correct state just just in this this might be mu- uh like might not be necessary but at least for this um at least for this test I would like to to have it this way so yeah to err on the on the safe side I guess. So if we return we're doing this all points right now what we're gonna do here just in case is because this well this shouldn't this shouldn't call uh cause this a um status change this shouldn't ca- cause the um the plugin to to be paused but just we're on the right on the on the safe side um we'll we'll see. So if a plugin changed state here obviously if we are in a passed state we are not gonna get any this function is not gonna get called so what we have to do is if if the plugin was switched to past state in the middle of this happening we're gonna do this and what's the the next po- the next point I guess the next point is we need to find the the point where uh the event handler for the um for the sockets now this is the event handler for the socket. This means that this function can be called by the event loop directly. So what do we have to do? We have to do this the exact the exact same thing. We have to save we have to save the the state and we have to switch and we have to switch the state to processing packet. Yeah once we're here we can execute all of this stuff. That's fine all of this is just fine this gonna this gonna read the information and if uh there's a if the packet is complete it's gonna invoke this function which is the one that actually processes the packet and ingests the data. Um so we need to restore the state whenever we return and this now this could cause a problem let me think yeah mm let's see if this state is these which means if the state was not changed by a third party then we restore the state. Mm and this this a little bit like this is a little bit noisy and that's and that's not good but I think it'll it will do for the moment because it would be better to be able to to just do it once per uh per code path I would say um and uh yeah that's not uh very cool. Maybe if we wrapped this function with another one that that would would have been much much easier much less uh noisy but we would have to we would have to do something about the context. Well that's that's not important because the point is um in this case uh proving that that we have found the right issue rather than producing the 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 patch guess I wouldn't want to I'm I'm not going to send these as a P R 'cause I I want the the original uh contributor to be the one uh making the correct patch and getting the credit for the patch right so but it would definitely pay off to in fact let's do it yeah let's do it it's it's not it's not right to do it this way so let's make this change uh let's lead with uh um the example uh yeah so we have this and what we're gonna do is gonna have this mm go have this and then oops so what does this function needs this function needs the connection and uh and that's it right so this function can just receive a connection and and that's it. So what are we gonna do with this? Gonna we're gonna take the connection oops uh yeah we're gonna take the event we we don't need it so what we want is this we want the the state backup backup the connection object context connection that's that's a little bit confusing because it's connection and connection but it's like uh this is like the plugin level connection and this is the network level connection this um a generic object that uh represents any type of uh networking connection can be a helic socket can be a um T C P connection or it can be a U D P connection which is not specifically a connection but in terms of context of um necological connection it's it's basically the same and then we have the the reset code from the inner function and that's what I will do result course action gonna oops. and and now we can do if the state is the one we set oops then the state equals the backup state which will most likely be running but if the state is passed then it means we need to perform the clean up that was delayed due to the uh in order to prevent this um function from sweeping under its own fit now this function we'll have to move it a little bit down so we don't have to declare to write the prototype for the other one 'cause that would make no sense now I think this should at least build maybe not we'll see but I think this should take care of the issue of course I could be wrong I'm usually wrong but there could be other uh corner cases too but uh I think that thi this is gonna like a g a good start and uh well apparently um well it built now that's a surprise things that build on the first try that uh that's not what I was expecting so oh let's see what happens here yeah two point one yeah we're close alright so the input plane was passed and then it was resumed for some reason I I don't know why but that's not the the main concern I guess in this case uh what we care about is that it was successfully passed hmm I think it's working but I think I'm gonna have to to set the mm yeah I think it's working but I'm gonna have to set the output plugin to standard output in order to um to see what's going on and it's gonna be a real noisy but at least it's gonna give us uh a better idea of what's what's happening and yeah we don't have uh yeah we don't have a huge problem with that because um if it doesn't crash then or if there are no memory corruptions then it's not like the information that we care about is gonna be um uh what should I say um yeah it's working so alright so what are we supposed to do now hmm we should first of all now this is real annoying because uh I set grace to zero and that shouldn't be taking this long but it's good we run we did the same thing and we didn't detect the issue now let's run it without foreground and let's see if we notice anything hmm yeah same thing happened yeah yeah it seems to be r working well working fine and uh I think it's a good lesson because it's uh sometimes uh conducting a proper root case analysis on this type of issue can be a mm hard endeavour it can be confusing uh especially if you're not super familiar with the codebase or how things are supposed to work but uh but it's good to know that um it's good to be aware of how um hard how treacherous or rather how um subtle uh this could be because sometimes you 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 misunderstand the point you miss the point and uh of of course it could be happening to me right now I could be completely wrong about this I under I I know it but the thing is that you have to be aware because sometimes you miss the point and uh by by chance or by not by chance but because of reasons uh I would say I would describe them as as side effects more than anything uh a a patch might work at least in the in the current conditions but it it might either not fix the issue uh in all cases or it might just you know hide the issue and make it way harder to diagnose and properly fix in the future and if you are uh in charge of fixing this issue then you're gonna have a very bad time so what's the next uh what's the next step here we have we have made a few changes I think in this case it's pretty uh meek or rather it's pretty um the changes have been done mm in a tidy way from the beginning so there's no not not there's not really any clean up so we can go ahead and create a new branch and I'm used to using my prefix because back back then when we worked on the same uh repository we used uh prefixes for all of our um branches uh in order to make clean up um easier in for for us and you know so good let's let's in order to follow the the rules of the of the project we need to um use this particular format for our um commit messages mm oh it's um this description is supposed to be uh clear enough but uh in reality uh the 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 descri description that should be uh more user readable I guess would be uh the one on the on the P R which we are not going to create but still this one should be uh enough to understand what we are doing on this comment and in fact yeah this uh takes us to um uh yeah so this should be fine now um now we should add these files to the yes and now we need to check the my menu 'cause we need to sign this comment and I think I should set uh yeah I think uh let's um I should set these 'cause this is a blank machine yeah so let's see and I think uh I don't know if I'm missing something here let's see and now whoops do I need to do something okay now let's check my my repository oops um let's check my comments yeah it looks good to me yeah so the next step is to actually communicate with the contributor yeah oh let's see let's read this again just in case I missed the the point in his P R just I mean the the whole uh root cause analysis and patch that we've done we've made uh was a nice exercise and all but let's be sure that we are not um misrepresenting anything or so there's a number of useful those errors to avoid sec faults uh to race condition protection to prevent crashes in the uh this when a connection was deleted all the messages are still being processed that's that's correct implemented reference counting to safely defer connection destruction until all event handlers are complete well yes that's a viable approach but when you do reference counting then um what you're doing is you still need to perform the the clean up you would uh let's say uh in this case or in any case rather uh reference counting would be similar or actually would be uh what a garbage collector would do but the thing is that in order to perform the clean up you have to actually call the garbage collector and that means that you would have you would still have to call the garbage collector every time you're done handling an event and uh that that wouldn't make a lot of sense uh uh iterating the connections to look for the ones that have the reference counter the that that seems like uh to me and maybe it's just my way of thinking that seems like an overly complicated solution for this but let's see mm yeah mhm alright now let's take a quick look at the code yeah yeah I don't yeah Um hmm this no this one that this one's interesting. Um because so we are not like a connection delete. Downstream connection release. We're gonna just try save, yeah? Yes, yeah, no, this this is safe and uh it's not necessary to perform the the connection uh the event um deletion or uh registration um before. So um so Alright, uh let's see. And uh let's see, one think is um 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 to be um there is only one um which means the the um the um yes hmm to to mm yeah let's see. Alright, so we're done. That's that's one I would call this a success. Now this this is all for today because it's Sunday and I've already worked two hours. That's that's way too much. So goodbye.